Okay, I call the Middleton Planning Board meeting to order on November 21st at 6:30. May I stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call. John.
I'm John Quinn, Lake District Representative.
Ex officio in place of Roxanne.
Scott Ferguson.
Thank you.
Christine Maynard.
John Mullin. Okay. I have on the agenda there, and they're a little screwed up, so we're gonna skip right to item five. And the first thing we're gonna do is we're going to open a hearing on the Hertel subdivision, Pinkham Road, map eight and eleven.
We're resuming it, right?
What's that?
We're resuming, not reopening.
Yeah, we're resuming, I'm sorry, resuming that, that, you are correct. And that, no, no, we're not, not Mr. Hertel. Was that, we didn't have a hearing, did we have a hearing?
We did not.
We did not. We will resume Mr. Sindor.
Right.
Right, okay, thank you. This particular subdivision here, Mr. Hertel has requested that he recess this hearing until the next meeting of December 12th because there have been some property line adjustments that he needs to look at, that has been brought to his attention since the last meeting. So, do I hear a motion that the hearing be recessed until December 12th?
So move.
I'll make a motion to...
Okay.
What is it, postpone or...
Recess this hearing on the Hertel subdivision until December 12th.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So what that means is, Mr. Hertel needs more time to adjust on some issues that propped up between the last meeting and this meeting. So he asked if he could recess this meeting, so we did, or we have...
If you just asked today.
What's that?
If you just asked today.
No, no, he did not ask today. He asked, I don't know when he asked that, the other day.
It's a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, a week or so ago, a week, yeah.
We did post it continuing.
We did post it. Yeah, we did post it. So I apologize for those who didn't see that, but we felt it was important that...
The original one was still posted.
Yeah, it was, yeah, so it's now December 12th.
Online, on the website?
A butter's got a notice that it is postponed, do they not?
I know it's on the calendar for the 12th, 'cause I saw it coming. Correct, people on the town page, it's right there in one of the four blocks of the town, so I put it down and said, oh, tonight, let's go.
Okay.
So it's a preliminary, so you're talking preliminary hearing, but you have not accepted his...
No, we have not accepted his application.
You should ask for plea.
This was a preliminary hearing, so we, we have any, there's no timeframe per se. As soon as we accept the application, then the clock starts.
Was the preliminary hearing, you know, this, when these are all the butters' notices?
Yes.
Yes.
There were some abutters that were not noticed. We did find that, and they will be re-noticed.
They were.
And they were.
Let it continue.
They were. So, I apologize for those who didn't get that, but December 12th, 6:30, we'll get into that at that time, okay?
Nope, you guys can stay as long as you like.
Yeah. Okay, all right. So in that case, if the hearing is rescinded, then it's, do I hear a motion at the hearing? Well, we have made a motion that it's recessed until January 12th. Okay, good enough.
December.
I mean, December 12th, thank you.
It's only a couple weeks.
All right, next on the agenda, this is the Sindor subdivision plan, map 16, lot 9 on King's Highway. And Mr. Sindor has requested, also due to some issues with the subdivision that he has proposed, that he would like another month to see if he can satisfy and correct those before we get into his application. He has given us our application, but we have not reviewed it or accepted or denied it. So, I would like to have a motion to grant Mr. Sindor's subdivision to be rescheduled for December 12th meeting, which is our regular meeting.
Okay, so move.
You want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to postpone that till next month, December 12th, or...
I'll second.
Okay.
Wait, can we just vote on it first?
Yes.
I seconded.
Okay.
And then...
Discussion, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, ma'am.
Can you clarify that again, what are the reasons for being delayed?
He had, there were some discrepancies between the boundary lines that he would like to research and redefine to make sure that they are correct on the plans that he has submitted. Both subdivision requests, the plans have been submitted, plans meaning a survey, and his reason for each one, reason for the subdivision. So, an abutter on Mr. Sindor, I'm sorry, Mr. Hertel's, had some questions about where the lines are, and so Mr. Hertel says, I will redefine that to make sure that...
No, you're talking about the...
They are...
We're talking about a Sindor proposal right now.
Yeah, well, Sindor, but, yes. And Sindor, it's the same issue, same issue, is that he wants to reassure that his subdivision is correct.
Okay, am I able to give my statement that I prepared for tonight, it's three minutes and 38 seconds, for Jonathan's, my brother?
Oh, you can, I suppose...
We can do that during public comment. You can do that during public comment?
Oh, you can, you tell me when the time is.
Okay.
You can do that.
Public comment is next.
Oh, that's next?
It's next, yeah.
Okay.
So, all right.
Very good. Convenient.
Okay, public comment, yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Dorothy Christine Chesley, sister of and abutter to Jonathan Edward Sindor. My husband Gary and I attended last month's meeting and submitted a statement that this proposed subdivision is not what our parents wanted and would create an injustice which cannot be fixed down the road. We requested that the proposal be tabled for six months to allow time for we three siblings, Jonathan, our older brother Joseph, and myself, to meet a comparable agreement concerning our parents' state. The planning board tabled, allowed tabling for just one month to allow time for us and another abutter to communicate with Jonathan and deal with concerns. My husband Gary Chesley and I are here again tonight to report what we have accomplished in this month. Our brother Joseph Sindor and I have both reached out to Jonathan, and he has not responded to us. Between the two of us, we have called, texted, and emailed several times, including Joseph's October 22nd, 2024 email, unreached, contacted all the members of the Middleton Planning Board, and myself, so that the board would know that we are making good faith in terms to contact Jonathan to have a discussion about the division of the land. We are trying to simply talk with Jonathan in hopefully concrete common ground so the land can be divided in keeping with our parents' wishes, but Jonathan has not responded to us at all. Joseph and I have spoken with a legal firm and to the New Hampshire Bar Association, both of which said the short extension granted to us by the planning board was insufficient to find suitable, a suitable attorney and achieve a court order instead. They had no recommendation for someone who could respond that quickly and dedicate the time necessary to talk about their needs. They said that we granted a one-month delay in the decision process was completely, a completely unreasonable amount of time to have any hope of working with an attorney and the courts to find some legal recourse needs at least 90 days. Since we have not had any communication with Jonathan, we know no reason why this subdivision request has any urgency to require a quick decision by the planning board. Thus, we request at least the 90 days that the New Hampshire Bar Association told us we would need at a minimum. 90 days from today will be Wednesday, February 19, but we also need to consider all the holidays during this time of year when no business is done, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's Day, Mark Liquid King Jr. Day. This would bring us into the following week, and the Thursday that week is Thursday, Friday 27, which would give us the minimum amount of time needed according to the New Hampshire Bar Association. It is still possible that Jonathan could change his mind and agree to meet with us, in which case we should be able to come quickly to a comparable agreement, but if he continues to review the conversation with us, forcing us to work with an attorney, that will require at least 90 days now. Respectfully, Gary Chesley and to Christine Chesley.
Do you have a copy of that?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, you can, very good. Clerk.
I'm welcome. Whoops, sir.
You have that memo?
I'm looking for it.
You're looking for it?
I had it printed out for you after the budget committee handed it to you.
Okay. Let me see if I...
Yeah, next hour. I know, I have it right here somewhere.
Okay.
To me, I was asking, yes, vice chair.
Okay, all right. If you read that, I'll list it to you on the spot.
Oh, fine, okay.
You can summarize that, okay. I was not here present at the meeting, Christine was acting on her behalf as vice chair. And, so we queried our attorney in terms of the approach the planning board would take on your particular situation. Our attorney advised us that situations that you're into are not part of our purview in terms of acting on an application. That would be between you and your other parties that are involved. So, your particular question, a request for an extension, I would have to say that that request for the applicant would have to come from the applicant, I would believe.
Yeah, he basically...
He would have to say, okay, I want to stop it. Now, we have afforded him a 30-day extension to try to work things out beyond the 30 days that you had, okay? He requested that actually today in an email from us, or from, from his agent of Norway Plan, okay? Now, there are a couple options that could do, we can't go on forever and ever. One of the things that can be do is he can withdraw his application altogether and start over. If you need 90 days, 120 days a year, whatever it needs to get, whatever you all have to figure out. But your issues among yourselves is not what we use to decide on the application. We look at the applicant and the documents that he provides us to ensure that what his request is meets the criteria of zoning ordinance, site plan, so forth and so on. They're not involved with right-of-way, they're not involved with boundary disputes, that would be a negotiation among yourselves, or involve attorneys, courts, so forth and so on, that's not in our wheelhouse. So I understand, I've been in the same boat, so I understand, but as a planning board, we have to go by, I think, the rules that are put forth, and I certainly understand what you're doing, but we will put this in the record. Okay? And I hope you can get your situation sorted out.
That was the frontage, the land block, that's the second paragraph, which I was kind of...
Second question.
It's a little...
That's not good enough. Frontage, class, very hard.
You couldn't have heard it either.
Under some circumstances. And then landlocked apartments are not allowed, that's how the class 6 is, that's King's Highway.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the other way, so it's not like it's, it's not like it's...
It's town road.
Yeah, it's not that other way, that general...
You'd have to look at the map.
But it is.
Well, no, the, 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 you're talking about the right-of-way?
Yeah, for the, yeah, because it's...
Right-of-way comes on the King's Highway.
Well, he's on the block, his, his lot is in the back.
Okay, well, you're landlocked, you have two options. Option one, you reach an agreement between the two property owners, or an east, if you can't come to it, the person requesting access to his back lot can go to court, and the court can force an easement.
So is he talking about if it was a class...
It's not a class 6.
Oh, okay.
It's King's Highway, whatever that is, class 5, here? Yes, not a class 6, no, it's class 5. So that would be what, what they're requesting there is a right-of-way.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's between...
That is, that is between the two parts.
Yeah, that is obvious, basically that's what you're saying.
Not involved, yeah, we're not involved.
It's obvious, it's obvious, thank you.
Okay, let's see. Okay, that's good, all right. Did you send that to me?
I didn't, it's, I have CCU and Roxanne.
Oh, okay, 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 it's probably in here somewhere.
It's the planning board email.
Oh, the planning board email?
It should be the planning board.
Okay.
Excuse me, can you send if there were several ways that we could move forward on that? One would be to see if Jonathan would draw it and start all over again, but we didn't get on to any other points, it's just, what are the other ways?
Basically, it's a civil matter.
Would be a civil matter.
It's a civil matter, so it would be you, your family hashing it out, or involving attorneys and letting the attorneys hash it out.
Yeah.
The town has, we have basically, our, our attorney basically said that if the property owner comes forward with an application, we have a responsibility to address the application appropriately.
Yes, I understand that, yeah, I just thought it got cut short and when the options...
No, I'm... I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry. The timeframe to act on an application, to make a decision, is 65 days after the application has been received and accepted.
As complete.
As complete.
So has that been, that hasn't been done?
No, no, it's not been addressed.
And are they, are you continuing this till the next, I'm out of order, Pinozard, are you continuing the Sindor till December 12th?
Yes.
And that'll be another public meeting, where we'll hear public comments.
That has, that has been, that has been posted, right?
Not yet, it's not, like, an hour.
Oh, not yet, okay, okay, okay. That will be posted appropriately, within the timeframe, it's supposed to be 10 days prior to the meeting, so it'll be posted.
Kate, is Lauren asking another question? Do you have to re-notice the abutters?
No, because we're recessing the hearing, all we will do is we, the applicant will, well, in this particular case, there's no change in abutters. In the other case, there is...
There was.
There was, and those will be, those will be, and the applicant will pay for their notice, and that will be done 10 days prior to that meeting. I think...
Because everybody, both Hertel and Sindor, had abutters notices sent out.
Yes.
So what we have to do is post the new hearing date, we don't have to re-notice.
No, we don't have to do new notices, except...
And we have to take down the old one, though, I didn't realize that hadn't happened.
Yeah, so...
So there's no chance that it would be in stone or at this time of 12th, like you were changing that date, we should just verify whether you had a touch of...
And you can call me at the time, in case there's any...
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you can always call the clerk, he knows more about what's going on than I do, so, in terms of scheduling, so. Okay, and at that time, Mr. Sindor had a request for waiver, which we would address at the same time. But remember, what we would be doing is, we'll keep, taking comments in the hearing on the, on the proposed project, then we would review the application, determine if it's complete. We would also, also entertain and review the request for waiver. If those are accepted, then the application is accepted, okay? We don't have to make a decision that night, we can wait until the next meeting, but we can make a decision at that night. So that's the way that would work.
Can we find out all of this information about the purpose of the proposed project and stuff like that, and public address, and all...
Yeah.
That the proposed project actually is and all this, other than...
No, the, the application is public information.
We saw, we went out...
The prints, the prints that he's given us are public information.
You went a little bit, right?
We saw that, but we didn't know what the project is for or anything like that.
Like what he's gonna do with the land, what he's subdivided, so that's nothing to do...
That is not, that is, no.
Okay, that's, thanks, because we haven't had any...
The only time, the only time that we would be concerned about what goes on the property is if he decides to get a building permit. And if he receives a building permit to do whatever he wants, must comply with the ordinances and the site plan regulations, he can, any, any applicant that meets those standards, we as a planning board have no jurisdiction to stop, you will.
The box isn't checked.
Right. Okay, so I...
What is the waiver for?
What's the what?
Waiver, you said he's asking for a waiver?
The waiver is that, one of the, one of the reg, one of the zoning ordinances within the zoning ordinance of Middleton is that minimum lot size is five acres, build of a lot, meaning that a...
We opt for five acres.
A wetland cannot be considered part of a five acre, so if you have, if you have five acres and you have an acre of wetlands...
You want bigger?
You, you gotta, you either gotta make it bigger, or you can't do it. So his waiver on the third, on the third subdivision, which is this way, he is, he did not have that surveyed for wetlands, so it's a pretty big lot, it's 10 acres or so, there's wetlands down the side, he's asking to waiver the requirement to have it surveyed and present to the town, because it's not on the map per se in terms of the delineation or how big the wetlands are. His contention or request is that the lot's big enough that if the lot is ever subdivided again, that would have to be taken into consideration, so we'll take that, that request, that's basically what it is.
Okay.
You can read the waiver if you like.
No, I'm...
Yeah, that's, that's roughly what he's trying to say. Any other question? Okay, public comment, Ms. Bizarre, Mrs. Bizarre.
Oh, we got Mr. Sindor?
We're done.
Good, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're not gonna stay longer, Kate?
Where are you going?
I gotta stop, I got a whole package to get.
Oh, are you staying?
Can you...
Can I what?
Pick some high points, we have a lot to do, I'll, I'll sit here, we'll be here till midnight if you want to.
I'm on the agenda, I'm coming on the agenda. I got a captive audience right there, but I need to move forward because I can't hear.
I thought you were leaving us.
This'll be rapid fire.
Rapid fire, okay.
Crowned old property, this position of, 2001 town hall, article, March 9, 2004. Planning board is part of that process.
Want to give that to the clerk?
No. I need easier to do this, thank you. That's the audience, one of those voters. That's that. Any questions?
Have you given this to the board select?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
A long time ago, you may have forgotten, back in July, June, July.
Okay.
But I can do it again, I'm happy to, happy to bring this to everybody's attention.
No.
I have number two.
Number two.
Sunrise Lake District or Village District, are they one and the same in the audience, ordinance or not? You talked about Sunrise Lake District, here's the map, here's what they have outlined, and here is the Village District.
What is that piece of paper you had in your hand?
Which one?
On your left hand, what is that then?
This is the Village District.
Village District.
I'm pretty proud of this, it's me.
It looks like something Ben brings home.
Did you have, did you have, did you have blunted scissors when you did that? Did you have blunt, blunted scissors when you did that?
Hey, I don't...
If you had a mapping program...
I don't get any fair to criticize the artist.
Thank you.
Okay, so, all right, so...
This is the Village District.
Okay, so...
This is the outlines of the entire Village District, and they are taxed accordingly.
Okay.
This is the Sunrise Lake District according to the 2000, please don't get me, my reading glasses on, 2021, prepared by local zoning districts, Sunrise Lake District.
Okay.
The zoning ordinance refers to base zoning districts as the Sunrise Lake District. So that is my question, are they one and the same, or are they two separate? This would be important in regards to height limits, say.
I was told that they are two separate things.
What is it, the Village?
Well, there's the Village District, and then there's...
There's the Sunrise Lake District, okay. The Village District, the Village District.
The Village District pays for the dam.
Village District's formation was for the dam only, period. They have no zoning authority for any, none.
That's fine.
So in your, in your...
So they are separate.
Yes, in your zoning ordinance, it does talk about, I believe in here, Sunrise...
Page four.
Yeah, page four, thank you.
We do talk about dams.
It's the Sunrise Lake District, it's ZRL. Village District is different than the Sunrise District.
Village District is not mentioned in here, it's the Sunrise Lake District?
No, Village District...
So if they are separate, then the Village District is not required to go by the one I of the highest height?
Oh, yes, they are, yes, they are.
They're not in the Sunrise Lake District? They're, they're...
Sunrise Lake, the Sunrise Lake District, which is responsible for the dam only, does, does not have anything to do with the zoning ordinances for the Sunrise Lake District diszone, Village District, Sunrise Village District, okay? So Village District, the Village District from tax purposes, and you showed me a couple properties that are taxed differently, right? They're taxed...
All of these lots are taxed as Village District blocks.
Okay, that, that...
Do they, do they go by the same zoning ordinance as the Sunrise, as the Sunrise Lake District, for instance?
If you're, what is, what is your intent of that? What is your, what, where you're driving at?
Those, those, that map eight, lot 11 is in the Village District.
Okay, so...
But it's outside of the Sunrise Lake Village District.
It's outside the Sunrise.
So I think the Village...
According to this map, it's outside of the Sunrise Lake.
So in terms, in terms of, in terms of a planning board issue, the zoning ordinances that are for the Sunrise Lake District, wherever that boundary is, and I can't tell you where it is, and you're, you're saying it's, okay...
It's on your map.
So the zoning...
You don't have to have an answer for me tonight.
Well, I, what is your question, what is, you want to know what the difference between the two is?
Are they one and the same, or are they separate?
I don't...
Do they go by the same requirements, height, whatever?
I would, I would say that they go by the same requirements that, for example, the height, the height, is 24 feet, whatever the height is.
Yes.
Okay, that is for the Sunrise Lake Village District, okay. I don't know if they're one and the same, to be honest with you, but we can... I don't know if they're one and the same, to be honest with you, but we can find out.
Next one. Spruce Road.
What's that?
Spruce Road.
Spruce Road.
Spru...
Spruce Road. Yeah, you're looking at me like, who's she popping up? Map four, lot 51, has a house on it. And I questioned the, I talked to Carl yesterday and today, and he said that the, and you'll see...
Are you worried about the height? Are you worried about the height on this one?
Yeah.
So, I asked Carl about the height on that one as well, because I was like, it looks really tall.
So, I need to see that the height requirements here.
So, does it specify, because he was saying that it's where, it doesn't specify where the...
Grade.
Where you, yeah.
Grade level.
So...
He's telling me that there's a discrepancy between the zoning, the, the building code, which I can't find anywhere, and...
What building code?
Yeah, what building code, and the zoning, which is the page that...
What is the discrepancy? Because it's pretty clear that in that...
I'm not, I'm not here to argue.
Okay, okay.
I'm here to ask questions.
Okay, so, what do you want us to do?
I want you to tell me, how do you measure the height of a building in the Sunrise Lake Village District?
What does Carl, what does, what does the code enforcement officer say?
He tells me, he needs you to fix it. He needs you to, and I don't wanna speak for Carl, but this is the gist of my information.
I've talked to him about this as well, because I've, I looked at this house, because I was told, like, oh, there are building houses in the back, and I wanted to go and see what they were. And I, first thing I said to him was, this looks really tall, like, how high is it? And he says, well, it's a gray area of where do you measure it from? Do you measure it from this point or this point, or do you measure it from this point or this point?
Okay, I will say, if you look in the zoning ordinance, all it says is 24 feet.
I was gonna say, I think the zoning ordinance needs to outline where you measure from.
I don't, I don't disagree.
Yeah, so...
I don't disagree.
I guess that's where he was...
Questioning?
That's where there was like that big question.
Because I know in the past, and I don't like to go, we've always done it this way, but there was a house that was built on Fox Road. Um, and, um, the building started to go up, and John Ramon went down there and said, you're too high, you have to change something. And I believe they had to either raise the, and he said that was the grade, the primary grade. Now, is that in the building code? Don't know. So, the question to ask Carl is, what, the town on building codes goes by the National State Building Code. So, if the National State Building Code says you measure from the, what is that called? The, the, the line, the landscape line, and not the, not the basement, but where it comes up, then that's what you go by. And if he says that's, where's it measured, then he measures from there. And if it's over 24 feet, he shouldn't allow it.
No, I'm, I'm not here to argue with him.
Okay, I'm not here to argue with him.
No, I know that, I appreciate that, I appreciate your time on this.
Or they have to go through the ZBA to get a, ask for a variance.
Well, no, he, he needs to tell us what does, what does your building code say in terms of how to measure?
Which leads me, which is nice to my second question. So, when I go online and I look for the town of Middleton building codes, I get this as a, and this is the, I just printed the front page, and it says, New Hampshire Division of Fire Safety. I mean, we used to have a readable building code. Where is it? Does anybody know?
It's, it's the state building code.
Well, this is what is under the...
Well...
I mean, yeah.
No, okay.
I'm not, I'm not...
No, no, I...
I'm not here to argue, I'm saying, where, where can I find the building code?
Well, I would say, you have to ask Carl, where's the building code? But we'll, we'll, we'll ask, we'll ask Carl, we'll ask Carl.
This is it. It's, it's almost unreadable, the whole, it's very, you know, New Hampshire Division of Fire Safety. So, okay, so there's that, there's that. Oh, so, does the planning board have any argument? And I've, I've talked to, um, Ron Brogdon. Talking about it, about getting the building permits online. We have this wonderful, would it be a real big thing to, to put it on, post it?
I don't know. I know every month I'm bringing the copy of the report to the planning board.
Right, and it's this report, you're giving it to us.
So, I don't know.
This is the town bill permits issue.
I guess I have to talk to Tim and see if it's a big deal.
It's a big deal.
I upload it to the website.
I know that we talked the last time, and you guys said you'd put it at the end of the minutes. And to me, that's, you can't, you can't go through a list of minutes to find, you know, the, a building permit you're looking for, right? When we have this wonderful program that, you know, just has them by month.
I can't think of any other way to do it.
I don't wanna pay extra work for you, but I'm just saying, it would, it would eliminate a lot of questions in this town.
I can ask Tim.
Pretty take a screenshot if you can't link to the program. I don't know.
This is just a question.
Okay.
I'll, I'll ask him.
Right.
Is that it?
No, I got a lot more, but I don't know, take up any more of your time.
I don't know if it'd be appropriate to ask you if you're going to, you're gonna declare that the hotel subdivision is a major subdivision, being one of three lots. Can you keep that for a second, sorry, on the building permit?
I'll take you want to see exactly.
Oh, just a moment.
The current month or...
I wanna see the entire report.
Like an, a current, up-to-date one?
Yeah, just like you'd go through any, you know.
It'll be in the minutes, because we have a copy of it.
The minutes, the minutes are a bit, are you gonna, you gotta go through all the minutes to find a particular house and lot?
She wants to search more, more, right?
In the, in the interim, until that's solved, they're in the back of the minutes. Or...
I'm still confused, so you want the whole report for the year or...
Ongoing, all of it.
So, let's see, that, that's gonna be a huge report. I got the dates to start and then, um, every month, maybe the new ones for a month? It's really, it's a PDF document, it's not...
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, and that's why I'm asking the question. If you say, oh, it can't be done, then apparently I gotta start reading your minutes.
Let me talk to Tim.
Yeah, but if you make a PDF for every month...
That's what I'm thinking.
Then, then you can search by month. It'll, it'll, you can search.
Versus every month printing of...
Nobody else, since it's important but me.
No way.
No, I mean, I do see where that, it would be nice to be able to say, like, hey, does that person have a permit for whatever or, and be able to easily track it.
It's public record, so it should be easily accessible.
You could just post them, you could just post them on the, they used to post them on the, on the News of Bill Mill News Wall. I mean, if that, if that makes sense to you, if it doesn't make sense...
Where they just printed out and thing it?
Yeah, well, they used to handwrite it and put it on the...
Well, that would be a question for, and we'll ask, but that's a question for code enforcement, like...
I talked to him about it.
And what'd he say?
It's a problem, but really, it is, I don't, I think that, that...
It's not her problem.
Well, somebody has to generate the report.
Oh, I can say that's our understanding.
I have access, so one of us would have to...
I just thought you'd do that.
When, when somebody asks it.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is review of minutes of October 10th, 2024. If you all had a chance to look at those.
You should be looking, yeah, okay, I get it, you're grabbing. There was a couple changes on one. Actually, Jonathan Sindor asked me to change one line. Took it out. Changed it. I had to take this quote with me.
I wasn't here, so I abstained.
I wasn't here either, so I abstained.
I'm sorry, we still would have a...
I make a motion to accept these minutes as a...
Transcribed.
Transcribed, thank you.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion, so move. Thank you. Okay. Communications. Thanks, Kate, for your communication.
I need some, I got more.
You could have to see right up here with us.
We're just here to listen.
Oh, what's that?
We're just here to listen.
Oh, okay.
We have an audience. We have a willing audience.
We'd love to have you as members. We need members. Okay.
Even as an alter.
Okay, budget review. Okay, I gave you, I don't know if I gave you a copy of the budget or not, but I'll talk to you about it a little bit. I went before the Board of Selectmen Budget Committee. Oops, that's the wrong one. Was it Monday, Scott? Was that when it was?
Yes.
Monday? And I presented, um, our request for budget for 2025, and I wanna go over again with the board what we requested. There were one, two, three, four, uh, line items that we have on the budget. As far as the budget is concerned right now, um, we have, the major thing that pops up is we have not spent any of our legal expense yet. But that will come forth before the end of the year, because of our zoning things that we have to go through, sending, we're redoing the whole zoning ordinance. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. So, the first item was Stratford Regional Planning. That's an ongoing dues. It went up slightly from last year. Those dues aren't due until July 1st. They run, their, their, uh, their term runs July 1st to June 30. It went up, I don't know, maybe sixty, seventy bucks, so now it's 245741. The next item was newspaper ads. I requested to keep a dollar in the line, just to keep it open in case we have to do newspaper ads. Workshops is the next one. Leaving it the same at 450. I really encourage the members, I know there's a lot of webinars and so forth available, and I encourage you to do that. And I understand that all three of you members, Roxanne included, have a full-time, well, full-time job plus. So, going to, uh, seminars that are conducted are tough, hard to do. I encourage the board members to go to the municipal association annual meeting. You learn a lot, not just from the seminars itself, but, uh, learning what your colleagues around the state run into in terms of land use. So, I kept it at 450. The next one was reference material, and I did, I kept it in there, 'cause I thought we were billed for these books. We are not, because we pay our dues. So, that $300, um, I don't know what you can do with that one, but that's been in there for a long time. I, I left it at that in case we needed supportive material to help us educate ourselves if there's something that's not given to us free. The last item on the budget was the legal fee. This year, we had $7,500 for legal fees. I requested an increase of $5,000. Why did I do that? We are going to do a minimal amount of changes this year in ordinances. We're going to kinda tweak the big zoning ordinance, take a, request to take a couple zoning ordinances out. Those need to be reviewed by the attorney. And we are going to address three large ordinances next year. One is, uh, a health ordinance on subject. One is workforce housing, which we already have in place, which, um, we need to take a look at seriously and make sure that that is correct. I believe we need professional help on that. I'll address that in a minute.
I think many people, at least kind of, need professional help.
Well, I, I, I think, I think the planning board, uh, I think over the years, and I've been on the planning board off and on since, I don't know, a long time, uh, we've gotten by, by plagiarizing other zoning ordinance. Now, they're getting more complex, and, um, I think we need professional help when we start addressing applications, when we start addressing ordinances, interpretation of ordinances and so forth and so on.
But also give it specific references to Middleton and not some other community.
No, 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 I understand that, yes, yeah. I mean, our ordinances, at the, at the budget meeting, I read the pre, one of the paragraph two of our preamble for our zoning ordinances and why we have. And, um, I think it was important to put that in the record, 'cause it says that our ordinances are developed to protect the well-being of Middleton, its residents, its natural resources, and to ensure that that is maintained, follows the master plan, so forth and so on. So, um, the workforce housing is, is a, is a large one. The other one was growth management that was talked about. I did some looking at the growth management of other communities just last week. Very, very complex. It's, it's complex, if not more, than an impact fee. And, uh, for what it's worth, I talked to the director of Stratford Regional Planning today about all this. And asked, I actually sent a request for a quote on a couple things. What would be the charge to look at our zoning ordinance? Okay? They can do a couple things. They can, how depth we wanna go. Right now, uh, she could look at it for a minimal amount, if nothing. If, if, if we just say, okay, we want you to look at it, make sure it's correct, everything cross-referenced, that kinda stuff. You get into more details, then she can quote, and it'll start going up. In terms of workforce housing, uh, she told me that they have some grant money left over, and this is for next year, that they could look at our ordinance free. We still would have to give the ordinance, and she would recommend, and she, she indicates to me, Stratford Regional Planning is not a, is not legal advice, it's back to municipal association. So, I'm sorry. So, the zoning ordinance, when we go through it, needs to go to the attorney. Any other ordinance that we put forth? For example, we're gonna, we're gonna pull out a couple, okay? We've changed some wording and so forth and so on. Next year, when you address those three, even if Stratford Regional Planning does everything, they say we, we want a full, we want MRI type of work, you would still need it, recommend to send to the attorney to have the blessing of them. That can cost a lot of money. I also asked about a circuit rider. Circuit rider, um, you've talked about that, talked about that before.
Was it $75 an hour?
Eighty.
Oh, price point up.
That's still, she prevent illegals, what, 300?
Yeah, well, here, if, what they can do, you can get as in-depth as you want. For example, Wakefield, they have a circuit rider and, uh, they spend $7,500 a year. I'm not saying we have to do that. Farmington, 75,000. What this is, is a individual within Stratford Regional Planning, which, uh, acts as a resource for the planning board and assistants. First thing they could do is they could look at these applications, okay? Review the applic, just like a planner in a larger city, review the application, they go through a checklist, they come back to us and they say, this is a recommendation, this is, this is minimal, minimal price to do that. And I don't know what the minimal price is yet, but I can get that. Then they can also come to your meetings if you have a, a large meeting, a, a, a unusual situation that you want. You don't want the attorney there, but you want somebody that is familiar with the process. I am more concerned, I am, not more, I'm very concerned about the process, that we do everything correctly, so that we don't get ourselves in trouble. So, circuit rider can, is 80 dollars an hour, and we can fine-tune it in which way we want. We can say, okay, we'd like you to take a look at this plan, but we don't need you to look at this one. You need to look at this ordinance, no, we can do this one on our own. We'd like you to come to this meeting, but you don't need to come to this meeting. So, um, when we start going through these things, we don't need to request a quote for workforce housing, because she believes that will be covered for next year. housing because she believes that will be covered for next year. She's asked me to provide her copy of, we have a markup version of this zoning ordinance. We went through that, and we marked it up with red and yellow and all that kind of stuff. I'm gonna try to make a copy of that for her, scan it, and send it to her, and then they can say, okay, this is, this is what it might cost, not cost, what we can do, and how deep do you want us to go? That's this year.
Okay. So they definitely get it done in time, or stuff, okay?
Because one of the things, I, I put in your packet, I think, I think I did. In your, not that packet, but the one I emailed to you. I emailed the calendar.
Yep.
Clock is ticking. Let me give you some dates here. Okay. It's this, it looks like this, although I, I put it, I marked, I marked it up in yellow.
Yeah.
This is the calendar. So, November eleventh, which has passed, is the first day to accept a petition for zoning ordinance. Haven't seen any, but that's okay. December eleventh is the last day for petition zoning amendments. Friday, January tenth, is the last day to post and publish notice for first hearing on a zoning amendment. Second hearing, if a second hearing is anticipated, if a second hearing is anticipated, January tenth. In other words, if you think you're gonna need two hearings, you gotta post it January tenth. You gotta have your zoning ordinance is done. January twentieth, the last day to hold a first public hearing on a zoning amendment. If we don't think we need two hearings, January twentieth is our deadline. January twenty-third is the last day to publish notice for a final public hearing on zoning amendments. February third is the last day to hold a final public hearing on proposed zoning amendments. Planning board must determine final zoning amendments formed to be posted. In other words, that's what will be shown up on the ballot. Last day is February fourth, the next day to place on file with Towne Kirk the official copy of the proposal.
So the petitioned, are the petitioned ones different from the ones that we would do?
Yeah, so anybody, twenty-five, twenty-five or more can say, I want to change, I want to put a Christmas tree amendment in the home business. And that has to go on the ballot.
Would the attorney be able to recommend a way to summarize the zoning ordinances?
I'm gonna have to find out, because I read someplace that if you make dramatic, slight grammatical changes, punctuation, that kind of stuff, you don't need to get approval to do that. But we've made some corrections, additions that we, on some of the ordinances.
Well, I'm just saying, last year we had three, and no one knew what they were. They were voting on them, just something on the table that saw they had moments to look over. If we could inform the public, give them a better decision.
But we did, they had the hear, they had the hearing.
I, I know, and it was a well-attended hearing, much like this is a well-attended meeting, just everyone's busy. I just want to know if the lawyer could summarize the big zoning ordinances.
Well, you can summarize. You can summarize amendments.
Right, amendments, not the zoning ordinance.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, see, I've seen that on other, other, they summarize it, but they still have to have the word-for-word available to, to public.
Exactly, just, it's a way to digest.
If you go online sometimes, and put them online, they'll, some, some towns have ten amendments.
Right.
So they say, this amendment has to do with walking your dog on the sidewalk between twelve and noon.
If you're interested, you can delve into the, the verbiage, it's just I'd like them more digestible, that way gives people a better chance. They still have to go look for it.
Yeah, they still gotta look for it, that's right. Okay.
We're not mailing out, I'm just saying, put it online.
We've had this discussion before, that's right. Okay. All right. So that was the budget. I hope it was well received by the budget committee, and I hope they approve our request. Okay. Member comments. I do have a member comment, and I believe you all did see that Janet Kalar submitted her resignation as an alternate. And I want to say for the record that Janet served us well. She had a wealth of knowledge, helped the planning board move through some issues. She's been in the planning board business for a long time, and as chair, I said we would miss you. She has offered, if we need questions, she can certainly help us out, but she is officially resigned.
I'm sure whatever is a properly identified Oklahoma park.
What's that?
Is it a properly identified Oklahoma park or manufactured housing, she'll be there.
She'll be there.
Whatever's an injustice, it's an act.
Okay. Member comments. I have a member comment. We have a person here, I believe, that is interested in becoming an alternate. Is that correct?
Yeah, I said I would help you.
Okay.
I'd do it.
That's good.
She's always here.
So, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, do I say accept?
To ask Kate Zardar to become an alternate, and we will send, if we approve, we will send our recommendation to the board's floor.
I'll make that motion.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? I have a lot of comments.
I want you to afford those costs to me in writing.
We will appreciate your help. You help us anyway from that side, now you can be on this.
We need members.
Okay. Alls in favor?
We also want me on the budget committee.
I've been asked that too, and I've given.
I tried that recruiting.
Pretty wants everybody on every day.
Can we, probably a formal letter, or can you just, it's just a, the board voted to ask Kate Zardar to become an alternate. Would you so, would you be so kind as to appoint, please? Don't say it that way, that's not the way to say it, but we request.
We request a point.
We, how, how would we?
We request.
Thank you. We request the appointment of Kate Zardar as an alternate to the planning board.
If I wasn't here, would you be saying that?
What's that?
If I wasn't here, would you be saying that?
Yes, I would.
Effective you and say?
As soon as they can get to it. Effective the meeting.
I'll do that, depending on what you do in the future.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'll get it on my letter.
Okay. Building permit review. Where is my building permit? I have that here.
We do have all the spots, if anyone's interested, if you know a friend.
Yeah.
Alternate is not a requirement, but it's always nice to have.
And if you want to become a member, we certainly would entertain that too, because I will be leaving the board in, at the end of February. So we will be down to two full-time members, one officio and one alternate. So it's, it's, once a month, we have a great clerk that does a lot of the work, but we certainly would entertain anybody that would like to be on the planning board. It's, it can be a, it's not as stressful as the ZBA, but it, it can be, we're trying to do the best for our residents as we can under the circumstances. So just remember, we're all volunteers, we're not professionals, but we try to do our best. Okay, your building permit.
Is this?
That's a new one.
This is new?
Yeah, I got this yesterday.
Wait, there's more.
Okay, here's page two.
That's a different one, page that he's opened. Carl ran that, right?
There's page two.
There's one, two, has it been back and forth?
Oh, yeah, back and forth, okay. So Carl gave this to me the other day, so we have, I don't know what you want to, there are, let's see here. There's a re-roof on the first one, siding replacement. This begins in September twenty-first. Randy Tuttle is adding a mudroom, ten by, adding a ten-by-twelve mudroom, twenty-four by twenty-four. I don't know how that works. That's on Beech Tree. Here's an addition, a modification or change of use on Oak Flare. I know where that one is. That's the piece of property that has the garage on the other side. Right, yeah.
So it does summarize them on the last page.
What's that?
It summarizes them.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Additions, okay, four additions, alteration, one garage. Okay, where is that? Addition to a laundry room, oh, I know that one.
I said my last one, because there's no summary to the last one.
New building.
So it can summarize them.
Yeah, okay, so garage, okay, on Route one fifty-three, ten by twenty, shed slash garage. That was approved on ten twenty-two. Next one is a tearing off the second story, that's on Pinkham. They've already started that one. New building, Plano Builders, this is on New Durham Road, twenty, I guess that's two thousand sixteen square feet. Okay, and then there is another new building, twenty-eight by thirty, and that is on Pond Road. That's a, I'm not sure where that one is.
Above access.
He's already started that one. You know where that one is?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, just add that to your list of building permits. Do you have any, anybody have any questions on those?
Well, not about anything specific, but, so for permits, who or how does it get dictated of who or what needs a permit?
There is, there is criteria, I believe.
It's listed in the new building permit that Carl's.
So if I, so if I go ahead and take down my deck and replace my deck and just, so if I have a ten-by-ten deck, and the boards, everything is rotting, and I need to replace it, and I take it down and I put another ten-by-ten deck out, I don't need a permit.
That's a good. We want you to remain safe when you take that down.
So there's no difference between, right there?
We don't want you to change your footprint.
So if I'm not changing a footprint, and I'm doing a ten-by-ten, if I'm, like, so when I put.
Why do we have a permit when you take off a roof? Change your roof.
Middleton doesn't have a like-for-like mortgage.
What's that?
I said Middleton does not have a like-for-like mortgage. Some cities and towns do where it replaces like-for-like.
Yeah.
So if you have a patch, your fences go up, you have to be replacing it with exactly what's there.
Doesn't say you have to get a permit to take that down, is that what it says?
Well, so I asked, I asked this because I wanted to make sure I was doing everything kosher, because, you know, being on all the boards that I'm on, don't want to get ratted. And I was told when we, we didn't take down our entire deck, but we, we basically just put on trex and trexed it up. No, no, I don't need a permit for it.
That you don't.
That you don't.
But as soon as you detach it from the house and then reattach it.
Yeah. If it's, right, if it's attached, yeah. Now.
But if you're just replacing the deck and boards, how?
So if, and then I was.
You tore down and replaced it.
Okay.
Yes.
Completely.
Completely. It's, it's like replacing a window.
Okay, so I was told that if I'm just replacing my windows, I don't need a permit.
Is that, that'll trigger the assessor?
Yes.
Your, your building permit triggers the assessor to come reassess your house. You put an door in.
So if you don't change the, if you don't.
No, if you get a, if you replace, this happened to me, I replaced the same door and same window, and I need a new building.
You gotta talk to Carl.
Okay, I just.
I didn't know that.
I was curious because.
And I'm assuming, like, if you have a rotten, rotten, old, rundown deck, and you're replacing that, this is an assumption on my part.
Yeah.
When you put, even if it's the same footprint, you put a new one out, that's gonna be assessed higher, and then that generates money for town.
I can't imagine a husband that's supposed to be married, and what do I know?
I could be wrong, and if I am wrong, it's.
No, I just didn't understand, because I was basically, I was told that if I was just replacing what I had, I didn't, we didn't, I didn't need a, I did not need a permit. So then my question was, is, well, when I got my roof done.
You had to get a permit to take it off.
My roofer got the permit to do our roof, but I was like, well, I already had a roof, it's, I'm not getting a bigger roof, I'm not getting a smaller roof, it's the same roof, it's the same square footage.
But you removed all the shingles. So if you went up there and had him replace a small patch, because you had a couple broken ones, whatever, you don't need a permit.
Well, that definitely, that adjusts the value of your home, because if you look at your assessment card, right? It will, it will cite the condition of the property. The landscape, the roof, siding, all that stuff, and that affects your assessment. So if you have a dilapidated deck, and the boards are rotten and everything else, even if, I suppose, even if you don't change the footprint, you did improve the structure by making it look prettier, which is more value than you had.
And more taxes. So they give a building permit as a trigger for the assessor to reassess your home.
There you go. You're right again.
I can't help it.
I know it.
I could be wrong, I always should say that.
I know, you cover your, you cover yourself on that one. Okay. Any member, any report from members? John, you have anything before we get into some stuff here?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, you don't have anything? I don't have anything except, Scott, you don't have anything? You're just, you're just hanging, right?
Actually, I did have, I mean, we can continue on, but I did have a question about some of our ordinances and how they kind of.
Well, we'll get into that when we talk about.
Yeah, because it probably will pop up in one of ours.
All right.
Does the board want to see my pictures of the table wood?
Not like now.
How's that committee coming on?
What?
That committee?
That.
I don't know, maybe you should come to a meeting and find out.
No.
Another meeting.
So, didn't you have, didn't you, didn't you have one the other day?
Yes, we did, and we're, we're a value group of people that are dedicated to protecting that property.
So, okay. So what happened?
We discussed more ways of protecting the property, we're creating.
You're moving forward?
We're moving forward. Our guest speaker.
Oh, that's right. That was, wasn't that Tuesday, or was that yesterday?
What day is it? Wednesday?
Yesterday, it was yesterday.
It's every third Wednesday.
Where the heck?
Open to the public.
I had that on my calendar.
Everyone, not everybody is invited, but you can see, you can see the logging that's been done, and where table, table wood is.
When was that logging done?
Well, that's on Pinkham Road. And this is Tom Garland's property.
Garland.
Garland, thank you. And another, another one here. Magic over by satellites.
What's a total acreage on Table Wood? Is it seventy-five?
It's above seventy-five.
So you can remember some things.
Good for people's minds.
Thank you very much. Okay. New business. Roxanne, we got an inquiry from a resident wanting to know about home business. And if you recall, in our zoning ordinance, we have a zoning ordinance on home enterprises, and they define, there's certain levels of enterprises. And in one of those definitions says, please submit a form. We don't have a form. Well, I have created a form, and I am suggesting, I'd like you all to look at this, you can either, we can table this till next time, do you have a chance? I took this from a town verbatim. It's one page long. Some of them are multiple pages.
What kind of business?
A home enterprise, and there are home business, home enterprise, I don't know, there's like four different categories of what they are. So we can either take the permit out, it's just a registration for a home business, or institute, leave that, where is the form? Here's the form.
I think it's worth looking into.
It's what?
It's worth looking into to see.
Okay, let me give you a check.
What are the benefits of having?
Benefits, I was asked once, do we know where all the home businesses are? Because there are requirements for home businesses. Parking, signage, that kind of stuff. And we don't have a record of where the home businesses are. So are they in accordance with the zoning order?
Does this include people who work for them?
I do not believe so, no. But if you run up business, do you, if.
I look at.
In there is a definition of what home businesses are, home enterprise, contractor's yard, that kind of stuff, okay?
Because, you know, the definition of. Because, you know, the definition of a business has changed the last fifty years. It's no longer the hundred acre mill.
Well...
You can have a...
Well, I mean, I look at the person who was running their contractor business or electrical business.
Well, this particular individual wanted a, a hair salon, beauty salon. Uh, another one is, there's a couple daycare places in here. So those are home businesses. And, and the most important thing is looking at, uh, parking availability, the impact of traffic in and out of that particular, whatever size it is.
Airbnb.
How many people are in the, is there just the resident owning or one other person? Or is it four people that are working in the building? That type of stuff. So take a look at this, this was fashioned after, um...
Just being sure.
What was this fashioned after? I forget what town it was. Town, uh, uh, I don't know which one, I modified. It might have been, uh, the town of Amherst, I think, maybe. Uh, some of the towns put the actual ordinance on the back, but this is a form for us to include that we have one, if that particular, if we agree to it, so take a...
So how would we treat a business like, just like somebody wanting to open up a store versus...
Well, that's defined, oops.
Because they would have to sit, go before the planning...
Yes.
Board.
Yeah.
So I would like to think that if somebody was doing a home business, that they would have to do...
Uh, some, they submit this to the board and the board reviews it and signs it off.
The board can request them come to the meeting.
Yeah, you can have them come to the meeting and say, okay. For example, here's what the form says. Okay, name the business, the address, description of the business, additional sheets are required, square footage devoted to the business of the growth, in other words, what's the regular size of your dwelling? How much is going to be the business? Do you have a sign? Number of employees, days of operation, amount of parking available, anticipated number of business-related trip days, in and out. Uh, any state licenses required, daycare requires a state license. Hair salon requires a state license. What else requires, Scott, there's all kinds of stuff.
There's all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, there's all kinds of stuff. If you, if given, give us the number. Then I hear, I certify that I understand, uh, the regulations and the restrictions of the town of Middleton zoning ordinance, Article twenty-two home. So Article twenty-two is on page fifty-eight. And on page fifty-eight, here's family compounds right before that one. Uh, page fifty-eight. That's not right. That's wrong. Where is that? Uh, sister, that's wrong. Okay, page fifty-four, sorry, fifty-four, page fifty-four. So there's one, two, three, four home enterprises. First one is a home business. Second one is a professional use or customing home occupation, such as doctors, dentists, lawyers, home daycare facilities, accountants, beauticians. Home industry, a business or trade that occupies, uh, for example, uh, Dalryples Garage, that's a home business, that would be considered a home industry if you were... Home office, home office subject to the following standards. There's like seven of them. No employee shall be permitted to work at the premise except for family members who reside in the dwelling. No sign shall be permitted, that's a home office, that would be...
Remote.
An accountant, or, or, uh, a, a, I don't know, massage person, okay? Uh, no customers or clients shall be seen at the residence. The area devoted to the home office shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the gross floor area. No outside storage shall be permitted for that business. So we have a, I don't know what we call that place up on Partridge, what do we call it? You know, the catalog guy that's gagging?
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about? I don't, he's not on Drew Drive, he's on...
Oh, he's on Partridge.
Partridge, yeah, way at the top, yeah. That's a, that's a, that's a big facility.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Uh, one company vehicle shall be permitted as an accessory to the home office. Deliveries and pickups related to the activities of the home office shall be of a nature that is consistent with a residential neighborhood. So there is definition of what those are. Then if you open a store, there's, there's certain, there's a lot more criteria if you open a store.
So which one falls under for like somebody who does the construction business and has all their construction equipment at their house?
That would be considered a home industry. And there is, there is, there is a, um, there is, and I, 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 there are, there are some people here that, a home ba, okay, home-based contractor yard, that's on page sixty-five, Article twenty-six. So Article twenty-six is right here. Article twenty-six, we even marked this up, purposes to, okay, contractor yards. There's some criteria here. Has to be on a five acre minimum lot. No more than six non-resident persons shall be employed. Um, all equipment and materials should be stored in a neat and orderly manner. How do you check that? I guess code enforcement, come in and check it. Right. Home-based contractors show, yards shall not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the lot and not exceed two acres, whichever is less.
So who enforces that?
Code enforcement.
Because I've got two and, we have two in our neighborhood.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, so, um, is that, is it allowed to summarize late? Just, are you, are you...
Well, you'd have to look, you'd have to look at each...
Well, I have to look specifically at this.
Uh, I believe some of them say home contractor is allowed, yeah, I'm not sure, but I'm, yeah.
I just pulled out a chart anyway.
Uh, parking garage, uh, through the home-based yard shall comply with building codes. Compliance with New Hampshire Department Environmental Services best management, and I think what they're talking about is fuel storage, spillage, that kind of stuff. And then, uh, home-based contractors are existing prior to November first, two thousand nine, shall have registered with no fee to the code enforcement office. After April first, two thousand ten, subject to these regulations such as pre-existing home-based shall, uh, contractor yard shall be allowed to continue to operate in their, in their present prior to November first, two thousand nine location. And it goes into some other dates that you have to comply with. So this doesn't apply to that.
Okay.
Home business would, that would be just, you can operate a home business in a zone if the zone allows it and you have to follow those, that criteria. If you don't follow, there's no, there's no filing of anything, if you don't file, if you, if you violate that, then the code enforcement can enforce this rule by...
Two hundred dollars a day.
Huh? What's that?
I said they all have a generic penalty, it's two hundred dollars per day in compliance.
Yep.
We just need to, I think, enforcement needs to be, I think, addressed before, it's kind of like, you know, you put all these rules in place.
The enforcement needs to do enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, rules are great, but if they're not enforced, so...
Okay. All right, so we look at that, all right. Um, I put in an email here when I sent out this stuff first part of the week about oath of office. We're all good. I double-checked, we're fine, we're all, it's all on file, um, we're good. It's all with the town clerk.
Yep, we've been sworn in and sworn out.
I did, I had three alerts to remind me to go.
Well...
I did it.
I just double-checked because Roxanne wanted to make sure that, that we were all kosher and we are. Uh, now, I have also given you a copy, we discussed rules of procedures a long time ago, a couple of years ago. Rules of procedures are a defined process as how we work. What do we do with, um, uh, meetings, how do we do it? Uh, how do we elect officers? Even though it's in the statute, you have your own rules and procedures. We never, I can't find them anywhere that they're enacted.
I thought we updated them, I thought we accepted those, did we not?
I don't, I couldn't find that.
Because I thought you, you presented them to us and we pre-talked about it.
We never voted on it.
Aye.
Minor detail.
Minor detail, yeah. So what I gave you is what I had presented back then. So I would like you to review that again, um, this just puts it in a, for example, the statute does tell you what you should do to a preliminary design group, applications for subdivision. Some communities, some towns and cities go into more detail in terms of what they do under certain things. Uh, based on this situation and the Sindorf situation, some towns have a withdrawal notification by the applicant. In other words, he has a form to fill out, we don't have such a form. Um, so, uh, that kind of makes sense, but what that does is formally withdraws the application and the applicant is known, okay, your application is withdrawn. If you want to do it again, you start all over. Notifications, uh, butters, all that kind of stuff. Um, we may have that, that may be a good idea. Uh, that's something we can talk about. Um, this just puts it into, it even show, it even talks about, uh, the order of which we have our, our agenda. And thi, this is basically recommended by the Office of Economic Development, whatever Office of, whatever they're called, this is what they recommend. And I just copied it word for word. No use creating another one. So if you would look at that and we can vote on that December twelfth, yea or nay? Okay, um, let's see, now, um...
I actually haven't changed this, should bring it to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
It talks about putting notes in the newspaper, we don't, we don't need to do it.
Right.
What it says in the newspaper.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Um, all right, let's, let's, let's make sure we understand, that I understand what we're going to try to do before the end of the year. Go through this ordinance, we've already done it. Went through this thing page for page. We've...
Basically updating and proofreading.
Proofreading, okay. We've discussed about removing, um, uh, the, uh, family compound ordinance, right?
Doing, going with it.
Just delete it. So if, if that's what we want to do, that's what we will do. Okay, that'll be part of the ordinance update, I believe, yes.
May I ask a question? About family compounds, you say you have, um, need private grounds. What is that?
Um, is that the, is that the private campground?
Is it a private campground?
I think that was a private campground.
Yeah.
Which I have questions behind me.
Well, that's something we need to take a look at. We really need, we need it, we need to, we need to get this defined, uh, and put together so we can get it to regional planning and see what they're going to charge us to take a look at that and see if we do it, if that's what we can do.
Yeah.
Uh, we did make some, uh, changes in other places, um, and I have them all marked. I think we went right to the last page. By the way, um, the ordinance has now incorporated the, uh, the ordinances that we approved last year. They are, uh, Robin has put them together, all she has to do now, they're in the right order, she has to do some formatting changes to page numbers because of the way we placed them. So there were three ordinances approved last year, in fact, fees, solar, and I forget the other one. Aqua, are the, Aquifer ordinance?
Updated.
Updated, so we don't have to do anything with that, but we have to, uh, go through these things and make sure that that's family compound we wanted to leave. And those are the type of things that will come up in a hearing, why you wanted to leave that. I can tell you Stratford Regional Planning doesn't, it causes way, in their, in their experience, a lot of problems. Uh, and it makes it, you know, it's nice to think about it the way it looks, but then as you move down the road with families splitting up and changing this and changing that, it doesn't cause us any angst, but it causes us extra work because then they start coming and asking, they want to divide you, this and that, so. Uh, they would go through this thing also and look at if there's new laws.
Well, we do have family compounds in the town, we're not...
We do.
So by removing it, we're getting rid of the record of it.
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, we have two or three family compounds.
That's all right, you put in there that any family compound prior to the acceptance of this removal, just, just like the non, that would be a non-compliance that would be allowed, just like the houses in the village district are, were non-compliant, they're not five acres.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Okay, so, and, and the ordinance says anything prior to this is okay.
But moving forward if they wanted to split up, they have to still...
They're moving forward, right.
Because they're pre-existing, they're pre-existing.
Thank you for that terminology, I appreciate it.
They are very welcome, I can throw them off any time.
That's why you're our...
Okay. So workforce housing, I talked about what, what Stratford Regional Planning is proposing for us to do. Um, I know that Mitchell and Bates, uh, or Mitchell Association, that used to be Mitchell and Bates, did comment about the workforce housing needs to be looked at, our ordinance. So, um, I would like to see what, uh, I did ask a lot about, a lot of questions on where, where the data's gathered from and she had some answers for him, but they could do that, all depends on how much that, how, yes, we want to go into to refine the workforce housing. I'm not saying they make it more difficult, just make it so that it's more understandable for the residents and so we can manage it and don't, um, cause any issues for the town. So, um, workforce housing, uh, growth management.
How do we deal with the changes because of workforce housing and everything changing so frequently with the state?
That's a toughie.
So...
Because it's, it's, it is changing so, it's changed statutes for land use. That, that's one of the things that, uh, Gen Z's, we were talking about today about zoning ordinances and why you need professional help because there, the state legislature, there are hundreds of statutes on land use. And, and do all of them get passed? No, but a lot of them do. And they, they're minor things, but they, they are important to note and it may change the way your ordinance is written and it's not right, okay? So, uh, reviewing an ordinance, also when they review an ordinance, they would review it in, in, in conjunction with, she says, do you have a CIP? I said, yes, we do. We have a master plan. Oh, that's good. So they would look at that and make sure that everything is clear. So you should review your, your ordinances every year based on the changes in the law. Um, some are minor, some are major, a lot of major ones that have come through are ADUs. What you can do and what you can't do, that's an evolving thing up in the legislature in terms of expanding ADUs. It'll be just a matter of time when you're going to be able to put two houses that, right now it has to be attached, can't be detached, it has to be attached. That'll change, I guarantee you, that'll eventually go away. Um, so, um, the other thing about workforce housing, uh, I think, I don't know whether it was you, Kate, or somebody, uh, might have been you, or Janet, I don't know, somebody told me that, uh, the State Housing Development Authority would be more than happy to come down and talk to us about housing and what's involved. And I think that would be a good idea from an education process for, for us to learn where the state is coming from. on the need for workforce housing.
I feel like I've heard this before. It may have been Janet. It may have been Janet. I feel like I've heard that.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm gonna try to get a hold of that and try to do that. Growth management. Stratford Regional Planning doesn't have a good taste for that. And the reason being is the administration of the growth management and the staff or the person that has, it's like Impact fees. There's a lot of calculations involved in terms of how do you put this forward? How do you delineate it? They're not in favor of it because of the administration of it is not... She's seen it not work. That's her opinion. I'm not saying we can't do it. But-
Can I ask a question?
No. Go ahead.
How many major subdivisions have we had in this town in the last five years?
I don't know.
Oh, there's, what's a major subdivision? It's more than three. So, there's Silver Street, there's Pinkham Road on one side, and then there's-
Pinkham Road on the other side.
So, that's how many additional units in this town? This one right here was how many?
All I'm saying-
I'm not asking for answers, I'm just saying, raising some questions.
All I'm saying to you on your question is that's a very good question to ask, but you have to look at, and I'm not for or against because I don't know enough about growth management, is I was advised today that's very, very difficult to administer. I'm not saying that there are ways to do it and there are towns, there's one town that their ordinance is 20 pages long.
Derry has one and it's pretty complex.
Pretty complex.
There's as much larger-
I thought it was a simple matter of just saying we only have 10 building permits, boom.
It's from what I've read, I spent a couple of hours online, like two or three weeks ago, trying to research it and review it and look at other towns to see who has ordinances in place.
Yeah, I've done the same.
And if you look at Derry, New Hampshire has one, and I think theirs is like 64, but they cite different RSAs and there's-
Relations, growth, it's based on-
They probably have a professional planner on that as well, but I know smaller towns have growth management.
They can do it. They just have found that it's, all depends on what the community wants. And I've told her the character of our community and what we're doing, what, in my view, we want.
Rural residential.
Thank you.
And I feel like I got the impression from reading Derry's and then there was another town that I read their whole master plan, which was done very well. And then their master plan had their growth management. And it recites a lot of the different RSAs, so I'm wondering if we would have to really walk a fine line with all of like workforce housing and housing laws that are going through the state? If that, everything interlocks together and, you know, we make one decision and then we get conflicts with a different RSA and before you know it, we're in litigation because we said 10 and we weren't supposed to say 10, we had to say 20.
Now, our growth, our, our need for housing in Middleton is we need between now, between 2003, 2000, I'm sorry, 2023. Between 2023 and 2040, based on the data, the growth rate of the state and the community and proximity to where we are around here is 80 additional homes.
Well, you just added 18. So, you can subtract.
That's what she said. I told her that and that's what she said. "Oh, well, you're almost there." So-
Well, I mean, we're walking a fine line telling people what they can do with their property.
Well, I, I've already told her-
Well, you are, you are.
Yeah, I've already told her what we have in terms of, you know, box size.
I want to say you only have so many or we need to have 70 more homes pop up overnight.
Well-
Well, and that's with the-
Well, you may not have 70 more homes overnight because somebody may come down and buy all the land and not want to do anything with it.
Or, or, or somebody may subdivide the property or do a development, take a look at Adam's Way. Is all that property sold and built?
No.
I'm just saying, okay.
And how many years has that been?
How many what?
How many years has that been?
Thank you. Pinkham Road, there's property that's been sold there. I, there's a realtor that has three lots. I don't know if they own them or not, but they have spec homes that they list on the site. Guess how much the spec homes are?
$5.59.
$5.44 and $5.34. Minimum of 1,400 square feet, but that's part of the covenants.
And most of them are all continued at this point.
So, you know, plus-
So, you're selling, I'm selling.
But around the corner. What I'm saying is when you look at the number of lots, yes, there's a lot. Okay? Are they all gonna be filled at once? I don't think so. That doesn't still mean that they won't be filled. I mean, you know, if you look at Drew Drive at Parker, that started that way, right?
Well, we've had 10 permit, 10 new build permits this year. Last I talked to Carl and that was a couple of weeks ago.
So, you're not supposed, you know, you're supposed to say that subdivision comes into town, you have all these unfilled subdivisions, that this is a pre-insured scavenged subdivision. It's not in the town's best interest to do any more subdividing until we have some stability.
Stability in what?
The ones that we have subdivided out are conveyed and sold.
Well, then that may be a long time. Maybe that's what, maybe that's-
Why do they put that in the law, that ability if it's not a valid?
So-
What you're saying in a nutshell, the Stratford Regional Planning Commission does not recommend growth management or rights. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not saying that it's yay or nay, I'm just saying what they recommend.
There's, that's the recommendation.
All right, as far as next year is concerned, I talked about, the other one was septic. Now, the septic ordinance that, that we have been talking about on the peripheral there, and John has mentioned this a lot. I think we need public education before we start throwing out ordinances to understand. And I will offer to the planning board that if you would allow the Sunrise Lake Watershed Advisory Committee to head that education process in conjunction with the planning board to educate the public and, and the septic ordinance regulation can go two ways.
Well, I'd ask them if they want to do that.
Okay? First way is, is a zoning ordinance, which would go before the people, okay? Would have to be voted on, so forth and so on. The other way is a health regulations, which some towns do. Health regulations can be enacted by the board selecting without a vote. It would be the board select. That's two ways. A lot of towns don't call them septic ordinances, it's a health ordinance, so forth and so on. So, part of the Sunrise Lake Watershed Management Plan is to look at such things as nutrients flowing into the lake, which a lot of it is septic. So, a lot of studies and information will be brought forth in terms of why we should or why we shouldn't. That will be paid for by that grant. So, I'm suggesting that on a septic system that we coordinate our education efforts with hearings and education seminars and so forth and why we should, if that's what we want.
I think it's a good idea because so far, all of the things that they've done for the public, the education, seems to be pretty successful. Or people have been very open to it.
Yeah.
So, I think that might be a helpful thing for the planning board.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we have, we have some more things in mind for next year, for '25 in terms of seminars and so forth and so on. So, one of them is that, to continue education. Our focus, we'll be spending a lot of time on the grant. I had questions the other day asking me about the ditch. Where does it run? I didn't know this, but, and I'm digressing here because we're, we're almost finished there. The culvert that runs underneath Lake Shore. That, that stream, whatever that is, that stream goes up to a culvert that goes underneath Elaine.
Yeah, it's underneath the road, it was up behind my house.
Yeah.
Is that, but, but the culvert goes under the road, but I can't find where the entrance.
On Elaine.
Yeah.
So-
No, I don't know where the other side of the pipe is.
Yeah, yeah, it's there.
Where?
So, it's a little yellow house, so there's a little bridge.
It's at an angle, so is it-
The stream goes over the bridge and then it diverts just past their house and goes across.
It looks-
I can show you on the map.
Well, I couldn't see it.
Between the yellow brown house?
Would you take that to Staples and have it-
You know what? We're get, aren't we talking about maps on Monday with the selection? The mapping system?
Yes, CAI's coming in to do that.
You're the chair, you know.
I think it comes-
CAI's on the internet.
Trying to think, I'm trying to look at Elaine.
Oh, okay.
It's halfway up.
Yeah, so I think it's-
It's at an angle.
Yes, I know where it, I know.
It's, it's a couple, it's-
So, it's where the, one of the campsites are.
It's above that.
It's above that.
Is it above that?
Yeah, I know.
Well, I know it fills, like that corner lot behind you fills up. So, there's, the corner lot on Elaine, on Gary and Elaine.
Yeah.
When we have like normal snowfall and normal rain or more, that corner lot fills.
So, the 166 that comes across like, because this, the stream-
I can't, okay, I couldn't, I couldn't-
You'd have to go on his property, I think.
So, it's under, it's covered underneath his property?
Yeah, it goes right under the road. No, the stream is open and he has a culvert and there's a little bridge.
Where's the culvert?
He has a, a little culvert and a little bridge that goes that way. And then it goes, his house is here or her house is here.
So, the culvert is right here.
And it goes right under the road, yeah. No, I mean, it may even come back all the way back like that. It might be way back on his property.
It's covered again like it is at the ditch. I wonder who did it.
I'll, I'll take a couple of pictures for you.
No, I took pictures.
Well, you're not gonna get it from the angle, I will.
Okay. All right.
How much?
So, we have, let me see if I have anything else. I don't think I do. We will, oh, one more thing. We're not gonna be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish in two meetings.
No.
So, we need to pick some workshop dates. So, I have a calendar here for December. Remember, Christmas is the 20th. That's about four weeks away.
Oh, God.
I'm willing to do, we have a meeting on the 12th of December.
Yep.
What the heck is this? Two meetings? That's about right. We have opened, the holiday next week is, it's done. So, the Christmas party is on the 14th.
What Christmas party?
I don't know, it's called a rec Christmas party.
The, the same.
Yeah, that, yeah. You have something, right?
The weekend, the Saturday.
Holiday dinner, right, that is. That's on the 7th. Now, the, I'm, I'm talking about here in terms of a Saturday.
Oh, the billiards.
Yeah, but in terms of Thursdays, the 19th, the 24th.
Christmas Eve, what do you have?
Huh?
Christmas Eve.
We are dedicated.
You're gonna go, you're gonna go along with your septic system.
I used to do, I used to do my Christmas shopping on Christmas Eve. I would go into the store and look at the mannequin and say, "I want that whole thing." And then she'd return it, right?
I used to get everybody off and joining the board.
Okay, would you all look at the calendar and give me some dates between now and the second week of January? And multiple dates, because we might have to meet a couple of times.
Between now and January?
January 20th, if we have just one. So, January 10th would be the, the last day. So, I can send out a, a monkey thing for you to serve it. I don't like to do that. Just pick some dates. And night, is night best for everybody? It's best for you, John, right?
Yep. Well, if you want to do it virtually.
I can do it 24/7.
You can meet me down there, it's like-
I'm not going down.
I'm just giving options.
I'm open 24/7.
So, you've got time, it's about distance.
Do we know when the school's having their little Christmas caroling thing?
I can tell you right now.
Was that in, oh, wait.
Talking caroling? You're really ambitious, John, for the holiday season.
Concert that they do.
It's our own fault.
Wouldn't you, would you, would it be too much to extend your next regular meeting with them?
Well, we're gonna be busy next meeting.
I know.
Because we're gonna have two hearings.
Yeah. Just throwing it out.
We can, we could, yeah. The only thing we have to really look at is the big ordinance. And we've already gone through that.
Gone through it. I've noticed a couple of things I liked for your 10th.
That's fine.
So, why don't we try the 19th, get, get done?
The 19th?
Yep.
November 19th?
November 19th, or, or December 19th.
Oh, December 19th.
December 19th is taken up by the Sunrise Lake Watershed Advisory Committee from 5:30 to 6:30. That would be fine. I'll just stay there, bring my cot, glass of wine, a beer, something.
That's not a meeting, man.
If I have a police officer here on the premises, I'm allowed to have that, I think. Scott can tell me.
Well, I'm just saying, if you want to get something done before January, we're running for holidays.
Okay, January 19th, 6:30, how's that?
January 19th?
January, no, December.
Sorry, December. 6:30, planning board. And we'll go, we'll, we'll finalize this thing. I'll try to get something out to all of you because I gotta, I don't know how I'm gonna scan all this stuff. I'm tempted to take it to Staples and have them scan it. I might do that. It'll probably cost me a fortune. We have, we have resources.
We do, we have the money for it.
Yeah.
Me as well.
That's what I might do. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have her sit there at the scanner all day.
She's got a lot, yeah.
All day long.
And then have to deal with the jams and-
Yeah.
Labor, get it over with.
Yeah. So-
So, I guess if you're gonna send that off, the one thing I wanted to, and I think I had mentioned it about for our zoning.
Yep.
So, for like the Lake District, when it says, let me find it again.
The height?
No, not the height part.
The definition?
It's the, it was like the usage or-
The what?
What you could put there?
Yes. So-
What page are you on?
Okay, so zoning map, Sunrise Lake. And where is it?
What, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for where it said the Sunrise Lake and then it says, um-
Page five?
Is it five?
You're looking for basic zoning ordinances?
Yeah.
Basic zoning, are you trying to look for the height?
No, it was where it says what you can, what that area is used for.
Allowed uses.
The allowed uses, thank you.
Oh, the special exceptions?
Permitted resident uses.
Okay, base zoning district.
Okay, so it's actually page 10. So, it says Sunrise Lake District and then it says permitted uses and then single-family houses and then essential services.
And we also, we have a note down here on setbacks, defined right of way. And we also, we have a note down here on setbacks, defined right-of-way, I don't know why that was put in there, because item three on accessory uses, setback structures excluding steps and terraces shall be at least fifte, oh yeah, we ran into this, 50 feet from any, any property line abutting the public, private, okay. So what's the definition of where you take the measure?
The property line, which is what?
What is, what is the property line?
It's not the middle of the road, it's where your property is, it's your, where your, where your meets and bounds are, where the tax map delineates your property as being.
So is it where the pins are?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what it is?
The right-of-way is going to go from pin to pin.
Pin to pin. So if your piece of property is like that, okay, and your pin is here, and the paved road is here, and this is gravel, this is part of the town.
That's part of the right-of-way.
That's the right-of-way. Now, is your, is the right-of, what is the definition of the right-of-way? Because the town, the right-of-way, I thought, was actually your property. Is it because the town has a legal right to do anything in that right-of-way?
So the town has the right-of-way, which goes pin to pin, and then from there, there's statute that governs, they can actually go beyond that, I forget how many feet, there's a certain amount of footage as well.
Oh, beyond the pins, if they have to.
Onto your property.
Yes, and the, and the whole purpose behind this is again, like road maintenance, snow.
Yeah.
You know, clearly, snow goes on everybody's property when they park a road.
Is that in the hard-to-travel book, you know, you know?
I was not sure of it, so I called the state when I was dealing with an issue over there, and I spoke with the DOTA up at the state level and got all of their information.
I think, I think that might be defined in the hard road-to-travel booklet that...
Is it three feet into your property?
I don't recall what the definition is.
And let's not put it out there as being fact.
So we have no definition of where to measure it, because some, some, we don't.
And I feel like this comes up often.
Well, it's come up, it came up with my neighbor next door.
Yeah.
Well, remember, in some, some places in ditch work is done, there's additional right-of-way, too.
Well, that, that particular, yeah, I know about that right-of-way. We had the official authority to go in there and put that ditch in. If you had anything in that right-of-way, we could move it, and we did, and we did not replace it.
I know, I just want to get better ditches.
Well...
I've seen better ditches in Afghanistan.
The what?
I've seen better ditches in Afghanistan.
Well...
Is that, is that...
You have, you have choices. You can move to Afghanistan, or you can try to clean your ditch out like you're supposed to.
No, it's not about cleaning.
Is that over on this...
Is it because it's too deep?
No.
No.
Is it over on your side of the lake?
Yep.
Is it part of the, the engineering plan you had done back in the day?
I didn't do it, I just supervised.
You had the grant money for the, for the drainage plan.
Yes.
Is that part of the ditching?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We can talk about the validity of the engineering done on that project.
I'm sorry, done, I'm not going to have any more done.
Thank God.
But it's, it's water over the, it's water over the ditch.
Water over the dam.
It's water over the ditch. So 6:30 on the 19th, right here, we get into this.
So I guess what I wanted to bring up was, so for this, because this is coming up for an issue that I'm personally having, is so when you look at page 10, I really need readers.
Yep.
And it outlines for the Lake District.
Yep.
And the permitted uses, it doesn't say anything about being able to have campgrounds or camp sites or anything like that, but then, for the accessory uses, it talks about ordinances and such as that. So where the town doesn't have jurisdiction...
The town does have...
Or not, or, I'm not, sorry, not ordinances, covenants. So where it says the local covenants, is that...
So, this we've talked about, and this brings up...
Your covenant is a part of your ordinance.
Yes.
But it cannot be less than the ordinance.
So I guess this is what I, my issue is, is so in the Lake District, we have covenants, and within those covenants, it says that there is not, you can't have a campsite, you can't be camping on it, you can't be doing what several people are doing. But then you go to the town, and the town's like, "Oh, no, we, we don't, we don't deal with your covenants, but..."
We don't enforce your covenants.
Yeah, we don't, you don't enforce our covenants.
Your association enforces your covenant.
Well, it's a, it's a symbol...
But this says accessory uses are signed according to, so local ordinance, local covenants are allowed in Sunrise Lake District, but it doesn't say that the planning board enforces those covenants. They are allowed that you set.
They allow...
That's where...
They're allowing us to set covenants.
Yes, that's what, that's the way I interpret that. That's the way I interpret that. We have, in Hampshire Shores, we have the same thing, covenants.
Yeah.
Problem is, the, the association doesn't want to spend resources to go after the covenants. Now, are there a lot of, where we are, are there, no. The only problem we have is people don't pay their dues, it's not a lot.
Yeah.
But we don't have issues like you do.
Yeah.
We don't have as many homes as you do, and we really only have one or two.
And you don't have the year-round.
I would say on the water, 80% are gone in the winter. On the other side of the street, 100% are still, that's only one.
One section.
One section. You, you have a whole scenario back in there. So that's, that's the way I would read that, is you could put any covenant you want, like, we don't, in, in Hampshire Shores, we don't allow chickens.
We don't have that. Well...
You could, you could put that forth, if you get somebody, if you get people to vote for it, with the three people that show up to your meeting, right?
Three, hit more now.
Oh, that's good.
I feel like five or six.
Okay, so we got a work, we got a work session set up. Any other things from the members? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:26. I have eight to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? So move, six, 8:26. Thank you very much for staying through this laborious, boring meeting.